Good afternoon. Hello Replay viewers. Thanks for watching, you can still share it out and tap to give hearts in the first 24 hours. Good afternoon everybody. Hey Janet. Sorry you guys got, you need to pop up your names so I know your names. Thanks for inviting followers, that's very sweet of you. Guys around. Sorry. Put you in my churro pod. Whoa. Hang on, sorry. We're going a little crazy. Hi Bonnie, I remember your name. Hey Wendy. Okay. There we go. You haven't been on scope in awhile. Well hello, alright let me get situated here. Your purchases. Although I stock the orders that I ship out because um I like to know when people get their orders. Cause it's exciting for me. Hello. Thank you for inviting followers. But yeah, do you stock your mailman? For like when you've purchased things? Like ridiculous, like you purchase it and you're already stocking it the next day. You do? Okay, so I'm not being the only crazy one today? You do. Hello hello. Come on in. We're talking about crazy behavior. You've been looking everyday. Well. Bonnie, you gotta give me a little bit of time. Oh I know, I know customers do. Your son does. You're stocking the FedEx guy for what? Oh that's cool. See I don't get alerts, so. I had an order the other day actually stay on my front porch all night. Because I didn't know that it was there. Ridiculous. And your neighborhood? Well I have a neighborhood like all of my um. Oh you little blue garden, you're in here. Um. A lot of us order online and so there's always a UPS truck or a FedEx. And so um it's hard to like watch out the window because you would get totally consumed by it. Yeah, mail monster, I know, right? It's a little crazy. So. I'm stocking even though it. Only like processed yesterday, which is ridiculous. Super diligent, yeah. I um. Amazon is the best. I turned off. So my um. You're wearing packages today? Cool. I do, my doorbell doesn't work. Um because the batteries died and it's a wireless one. Which I'm fine with because when the baby was really young, he would wake her up because the dog would bark and the barking dog would wake up the baby. So it's fine when the battery died and I never replaced it. So they can ring the doorbell all they want and I still won't know that they're out there. Which is really bad, right? Cause you're supposed to like have the doorbell for a reason. Bad idea? Of not having a doorbell? Well, I don't know. They're annoying. They're so annoying. So 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 annoying. So what have you guys been up to this morning? They never wait for you? Yeah. Right? I have to change some of this music. They dropped it and ran. Brothers autism would sit away from. Aww. That's true, sometimes they don't even ring the doorbell, they just leave it there. Yeah. So, I don't know. I'm stocking because I got an email saying that it processed. And I don't even have a tracking number you guys, that's how ridiculous it is. So I keep on checking my email going. Do I have a tracking number yet? Do I have a tracking number yet? Do I have a tracking number? So it's actually really, really ridiculous. Not a little bit, but super ridiculous. And it's coming from all the way across the other side of the world, so. They do. Yeah, that's why like when I ship stuff, I take it to the post office and watch them scan. Um my orders, so I know that they've been scanned and they are start processing. What am I waiting for? I am waiting for my Doki Disk Agenda. I can't wait. I'm really excited. Because I want to be able to size things for it and I pretty have a good sizing because she sent me all the sizes. Um and like the dimensions, but I really. I don't know Jen, I think so. I didn't pick it, she's just sending it to me. Um but I'm pretty sure since it's the only one that's really available right now. Yeah, I so I imagine I should have it before the weekend, which would be exciting. Because so like I have these sized for the A5. Which the Doki is um an A5, but then I need to do the. Hole punches and it's only eight rings, eight um disk instead of nine, like the Happy Planner is nine. So it's a little bit different. So I just want to make sure I have things like straight. If you know what I mean. So while I'm talking to you guys, I actually need to send something to the printer so we can start printing. And I cleared my screen so I could use it as my opening background. Cause my office is a wreck and there's nothing really I can focus on when I first start. Isn't that horrible? So I need a bigger desk area and I just don't have the time to get that done right now. So what are you guys up to today? Yeah, it is working problems. Because it's just. Plus I have my entire craft room in here too, so it wasn't really like set up for office office. Um. Ooh return calls, range target. Dentist. I don't know who you are, so I don't know. Scoping a functional desk? Um. Not today. Would not be an option today. Um the big Happy Planner, a lot of my stickers will already fit it. Um the problem is is I, the full boxes is a little bit harder to do only because. It would take a lot of sticker paper to. Do it and I'm talking about like you would have to get like an entire full sheet, so maybe, but a lot of my stickers still work. Yeah. Every size will be. Aww, I bet he's so cute. Yes sweetie? I'm scoping, can you wait a few minutes? Hang on guys, she has to tell me something. What?
Do we have that vegetable stuff?
The vegetable stuff?
Yeah.
Like what?
Remember what we have like two days ago?
You have to look in the outside refrigerator.
I did, but it was no out there.
Okay, what? There's the carrots out there, you can do that with hummus or ranch. What?
We have soup anywhere.
You can't find tomato soup anywhere? Go look in the pantry.
In the pantry.
Huh? Oh, how about spicy? Okay, give me a few minutes and I'll solve that for you. What? Come here. Alright, sorry you guys. No, we're not unloading, not yet. Come here. Sorry y'all, I apologize, that was not a trip. No, stop drinking on my drink. You get to buy your Happy Planner Friday, yay! Yeah, there's some downstairs, go get your own cup. So. Which Happy Planner are you getting? Did you, do you know what pattern you want? Are you gonna go look and pick one out? I know I missed a ton of comments, I'm sorry you guys. What are we looking for? I don't know she, honey, she wants some vegetable thing, I have no idea what she's talking about. And then they want tomato soup.
Turn that off.
No.
Vegetables with. Remember what we have like a few days ago?
The vegetables with the pasta and the ham?
No.
Then I have no idea, I'm scoping right now.
It was crackers with those like. Vegetable and it was with grape and strawberries.
Um.
Well I don't mommy.
I don't know. Okay you guys, this is not going so well because we have people wanting stuff all over the place. And they want something for lunch that I have no idea. Yeah, right? Exactly.
Crackers and like.
Did you fry the Happy Planner for twelve hours?
And there was a whole bunch of stuff.
We obviously don't have it if you can't find it in the refrigerator.
Did you buy that McDonald's?
Yeah, it has an Egg McMuffin in it.
What is it, can I see it?
Take it downstairs, you guys can split it. That's spicy. I'm, I'm not gonna accomplish much, anything right now with them. Take it downstairs, come here.
Is it too large?
Yep, go.
I don't wanna split my sandwich.
You have to, there's only one in there.
Why?
Because. Out. Oh, the problems with having a child is doesn't feel the best and then doesn't wanna behave. Yeah, she doesn't wanna share. At all. So who, okay if you work from home, like legit work from home, raise your hand. Yes, the two of them at the same time can be a huge handful honey. Are you coming home for lunch? Apparently we don't have exactly one day. Okay. And how many kids do you have? So I should have asked that one at first. Raise your hand, tell me how many kids you have if you work at home. Let's talk about this for a second. Oh yeah, I know you have eleven. You're eating lunch while you're watching, okay. Two. Okay, so that's a decent amount. Two kids, okay. One's eleven, almost twelve. Four kids, three kids. But older, okay. Well older kids. I've, older kids are a little bit easier, right? Because you can say I'm working and usually the only time they wanna bug you is if they wanna ask you something. So um seventeen years, seven months, seven years and nine months, okay. Oh then you don't know the field, do you, empty nester? Yes, the distractions are all, also, also hard, right? Because it's like, oh I should be doing this, this is what I should be doing. And so I actually, that's why I have doors on the office and they lock. Um. So it's hard, right? It's hard because you're torn with what they need and what you need to do for and having two to have at home all day. Yeah. Sometimes you want to change your name, I know. Is in your bedroom? Oh, how do you get anything done? I, I would be very distracted. I'd be like, there's laundry needs to be done. Things need to be picked up. You gave up on it? I normal times, it's not so bad except for when it's really, really busy, right? So when it's really busy and you're trying to balance both, you have a hard time because. You know, everybody needs you, you take a break for lunch, you get distracted. I don't know about you, but I get distracted if I go downstairs. So try to stay upstairs as much I can. That's probably because you hate doing laundry because you have eleven kids. I hate doing laundry and I have four, soon to be five. I can't stand laundry. I can wash it and dry it, but I don't wanna fold it and put it away. I just, I, I don't like it. At all. It's like I want somebody sitting on the bed, entertaining, talking to me while I fold. And then I could fold like seven loads of laundry, all in one sitting. But if I have to do it by myself, I don't wanna do it. It's boring. And it just takes too much time. You watch Scopes You Fold? I've done that too, but then I get distracted because I wanna comment and I can't comment while I'm folding. Bathroom duty? Oh yeah. You box people while you fold? Yeah, it's just a lot. Just to do laundry, yeah. Um so I have a mother's helper now. For a few days, well, right now she's every day because I'm just really busy getting all these orders done. And when I hired her, I talked to her, I'm like, okay, light stuff is gonna have to be done. Which one of this laundry? I made sure. And she's like, she got more loads done yesterday than I probably could have in three days. And it's because she's not mom. Yeah, a huge blessing, huge gigantic blessing. The whole story was a blessing, it's worked out amazingly, ends up being she's actually related to us. Um she's Jason's second cousin. So. It's a huge blessing all the way around. Um but she got more done in that time than I can. Right? I know, they get more done because the kids aren't like. So. And she doesn't get frustrated, like my two and a half year old, she likes to help with laundry, which is great. Except when I'm trying to get a ton done and it's like, okay, you're doing great, but. Scoot out of the way, here's your basket. And so that's what I do. I give her her own basket, I'm like, here's your basket and here's mommy's basket, so. But today they were painting and finger painting, so that was fun. That's not a bad idea. You give the kids the socks. I have, I should show you guys sometime, I have an entire bin. Of when laundry gets done and then the socks don't match, they all go into this bin and then. Once every month or two months, we dump it out and I make them sorted and see if they can find any matches. Eventually I think we just need to throw it away and start all over because socks are like a mystery, right? How do you not have matches? They're just a mystery. You tape paper under the dining room table? Very cool. I'm sure you have some very creative ideas. They were setting up on the dining room table. And then I have their smocks from Ikea, which they're so cute, and their long sleeve, which love. Okay, so most painting smocks. They're like short sleeve, when you're like, what happens to the rest of it? Um. And so Ikea makes their smocks all long sleeve. You did it for a friend once a month? Where do you live? Like you can come into our basket of socks. That is hilarious. Yeah, see I just put them in their little smocks and, oh, well that's a little too far for me. I'll send them to you. Here's your box of socks for the month, wouldn't that be hilarious? There you go, anybody want a business idea? Start that. We'll match your socks, send us your box. And you send it back home. I'm sure there's um, there's definitely a market for that. I'm not doing it, I have my business, I'm good with it. I like what I'm doing, I don't need anything else. Oh, and so then. Um. We find out yesterday that my husband is going out of town. Oh someone do it, yeah. Um. So most of next week and a good part of the following week. And I'm like, are you kidding me? Like right now? It couldn't have been a month from now, right? So poor thing. So he has to paint like literally every night to get the painting done because he doesn't have as much time. To get it done. Now and I feel really bad for him. So. It's like, really one more thing. But isn't that life, when you're dealing with something or you're in the thick of things, there's always one more thing. There's always that one more thing. No, and like they're gone and he'll be back for the weekend, thankfully. But next week is also spring break, so all the kids are home? And for those of you who have teenagers, you know why I'm shaking my head. Because it's just, you know, a joy. I enjoy the break for being at school. So for those of you who homeschool, I feel for you, I don't know how you do it. Really, that's good. Right, exactly. It's always the week that you have a ton going on and like we have a lot coming up. Leading up for the next month that we need to get done and I'm just like, really? Really? So mommy might have to take a day trip to Ikea next week. I'm just saying honey, if you're listening, I may be going to Ikea next week while they're all at home. Oh, you guys, so I talked to a midwife and we are meeting her on Friday. I'm really excited about it. And she does evening appointments so that the dads can come. How cool is that? Right? It's pretty exciting. I love Ikea too. I love. But I always spend way more than I want to. So this time I'm going with a list. This is what I need and want. Yes, so. Also love your midwife. I am. I'm excited, but I'm nervous because I haven't had a baby at home. It's an hour and fifteen minutes away Katie. So it's in Pittsburgh. Oh I know, the family specials rock, right? And I love eating lunch there because I love their Swedish meatballs and their mashed potatoes. And it's amazing. It's just so good. So um, what was I saying? I forgot. Oh home birth, yes, thanks. Oh yeah, and the sauce? Come on. No, it's a good drive, you take the back roads. It's easy, simple drive. It's fast, it's awesome. Um. Oh that's a good idea. Five minutes? I would be, sorry you guys, my notes are just, I'd be in so much trouble if it was five minutes away. Alright, so home birth. We are very much seriously moving in that direction and I will be honest. I'm a little nervous about it because I've had four hospital births. And um. The only thing I don't like is, is like, so I go into labor very quickly and my contractions come very hard and very strong. That I don't, I can't take a breath. Um. No, we don't know what we're having yet, so I'm not gonna pick a name. Um. So I have a hard time breathing between them, but I've never had like a real person like really coached because like the nurses, they don't really. They just wanna be like, oh, let's give you an epidural. And when you're in that much pain and somebody says, here, let's give you pain relief, you're like, yes please. And so I'm not gonna have this option this time, which is good because I don't want it because I do horrible with epidurals and it's caused me a lot of problems. And the last time. Um. I actually flatlined on the labor table and the baby and I flatlined for three minutes. Because the anesthesiologist messed up and gave me three full epidurals in less than forty-five minutes because it wasn't taking. And I just don't wanna go that route again, right? It was scary. I don't want to go that route. And then afterwards the swelling. That. That happens is ridiculous, like my feet are like this huge, I can't even walk on them, they are so big. Um. Yeah, exactly. Well Jason's gonna be a wonderful coach, but um. It's also cool because the midwife is there, she has assistants that are there to help out and to help remind him and remind me. Um. Of how to breathe and get through it. And so here's what she says, she goes. So I bring my assistants and while you're um laboring and if you don't need anything like we'll clean and we're gonna make meals and make sure you're prepared. And I was like, what? Seriously? She goes, oh yeah, like we wanna make sure everything's taken care of, like that's what we're here for. Yes, sign me up. Right now. Right now. Which is fine. The house will probably be completely fine because I don't nest at the end, I nest the whole entire time. So like it's Project Glor when I'm pregnant, it's like let's get this, 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 this and this done. Has nothing to do with the baby coming, but let's get that done. That's me. So, and I'm driving my husband crazy because we've already started. Some of you know, like we already painted the kitchen cabinets. All the walls downstairs got painted. All the trim is painted and now he's doing the doors. Yeah, we have been very busy, haven't we honey? Um. Now he's doing the rest of the doors and the railing. Breathing in calm presence, exactly. So I'm like. So am I little, honey, you see about not having an epidural? Yes, but I'll be fine, I can do it. You never nested, really? I just, I think my organization and my hyper planning just goes in overdrive. I think that really is my problem. Cause that's how I normally am and so when I'm pregnant, it just escalates to a point that it's like ridiculous. So. Oh, she didn't even go into labor yet? I know she's due any day. She did do the primrose, aww. Is she drinking raspberry tea? Right? And that's what I was told, recovery is quicker. Um which I always thought my recovery was pretty fast, but there's just like a lot of bleeding, so the bleeding is less, for those of you really wanna know on this. Recovery is quicker, you feel better. Of course it's better for the baby, we all know that. Um. But I'm looking forward to just physically feeling better afterwards and not feeling so like watered down. I mean, I just get so swollen, it's horrible. So. And then we have a jet tub in our bathroom, so she's like, I asked her, I was like, well, instead of bringing it, well, can we just use that? She goes. Yeah, so much easier. I'm like, awesome. So we'll have that set up and ready to go. I might have to put pumper pads on it so I can actually comment it. Wow. She's dilated too, ooh, any day then. Yeah, right? Yeah, you cannot get up and walk around. First of all, they don't let you. They don't let you get up and you're like, I just wanna get up. And then they're more concerned about having you pee and you're like, you won't let me get out of bed to go to the bathroom. And then you have to call somebody to help you. Um it's harder to get your baby up out of. Bed and I'm like, alright, home birth, I think this is just the way to go. Let's just do it right. So anyways, that's. Subject. I'm sure most people wanna hear about, right? In that lunchtime hour. You wanna talk about home birth stuff? Look at me, I'm stocking my email you guys, I still don't have my shipping notification. Like it's processing. It's processing. Oh and then I have Washi on the way, so I have quite a bit of mail, I'm excited. Yesterday's mail was over two thousand sheets of paper. And I left it on the front porch for Jason to get home. I was like, honey, can you get me that box outside and take it upstairs to my office? Yeah, it was a huge box. I felt so bad for the UPS guy because it weighed a ton. It is, and you know what? I don't get much mail. Like I don't. So I only get mail like if I've ordered something and I really. Am a very conservative shopper, I don't buy too much. You need to go to um. That's where you need to go. So Amy swears by the quality, they have a huge, huge selection. Um. So lots of pretty, pretty, pretty stuff. And inexpensive, a dollar a roll. I mean, you can't find Washi even at Hobby Lobby for that much. Yep, prettypackages.tictail.com. You order all things and there's nothing for a mother shell? Well before we went um to go visit Mackenzie, I had orders coming because I was ordering some maternity clothes because I really didn't have much to wear. Um but for the most part, I'm doing pretty good. I'm, but you know what I need to find? I need to find rain boots for the girls. Because that's part of their um Easter holiday present. So we're doing rain boots and I can't find any that I really, really love. So we're doing rain boots and I can't find any that I really, really love. Although I found some on Amazon for one of the girls, but not the other. This is what I'm doing at the orthodontist this morning is I was shopping for, um, rain boots. And he was laughing, my orthodontist was laughing at me. So I need to find rain boots because that's what they want. You still, after thirty-five years, you still love the mail? I would think that it would like annoy you. Think you'd be like, oh, man. Did you get to walk? Yeah, Jenny, come on. We have to multitask, right? Or nothing ever gets done. And considering it needs to be here before Sunday, I should have ordered it a while ago. And our selection around here is Kohl's? Walmart? I don't think JCPenney's or Albert Beerman carry them. Now, do we have, yeah, JCPenney's. No, my target is almost forty-five minutes away. So that's not an option either, which is why I don't have very much Dollar Spot things that save money, but I don't have them. And I can't because it's like, it's a, it's a hike to go. It's like, okay, am I gonna drive all that way? We do have a farm store. We, that we do. We have a couple farm stores. No, they're not pretty. Cool. Go have fun picking up your new car. How awesome is that? Oh, okay. Alright. I know my, my people in, um, the post office. Um, I walk in and, okay, so the one gentleman, he doesn't even make me wait in line anymore. He's like, just scan. I was like, yep. He goes, put them here. He scans them while he's taking care of another customer. And I'm like, okay, I'll see you tomorrow. Because I'm there almost every day. So it's pretty cool. I'm like, alright, see you tomorrow. We have like a little relationship going on. It's pretty cool. You have to go forty-five minutes just to get to a Walmart? I know. See, struggles, right? We have lines. We saw people who were like, that's where they go. They have to go into the post office. They don't do things online here. So everybody goes to the post. So there's a decent amount, um, of lines. I'm like looking on Amazon while we talk to guys. So if anybody has a Target next to you and you find something cool, let me know because Target's not near me. And they have these really cute file folders right now that I wanna use for my office. Because right now I'm using like just the generic red, yellow, blue, green, purple ones. But you use what you have, right? And I don't wanna pay for the like Martha Stewart ones at Staples. They're expensive. Any Dollar Spot things. Yes, Cynthia, you do. I know you're looking for the flamingo stuff. I'm not a big huge flamingo stuff, but some of the other stuff was really cute. So the file folders that somebody posted on Instagram or one of the planner groups. There's no price break. Yeah. See, that's the other thing that I have to start working on because I am going to be moving to my own website. I'm gonna move off of Etsy. So I need to figure out my shipping because Etsy gives, um, shipping discounts. Okay, I will. Um, if I had the time to do that, I would right now, but I don't. I don't know. They're like pastelly. I don't know. I'll have to look at the picture and it's on my phone and I'm scoping, so I can't look at it right now. I have done that before. I've used scrapbook papers to decorate my file folders, but I just don't have the time for that right now. No, it, that would be an absolute horrendous mess. They do help in the office some. My littlest loves to unload the paper from the silhouette machine. So she like, she'll stalk it and watch it. She goes, and just stands there and watches it. She goes, mom, it's ready, it's ready. And she'll hit the unload button. Which is pretty funny. That's what she loves to do. Okay, how can you legitimately charge thirty dollars for rain boots? That's a little crazy. Alright, you guys. Boring scope, I know. I'm sorry. I'm like scatterbrained today. Started off the morning with an appointment and just kinda haven't got my groove in yet. And I need to work and I wanna play my planner. But I need to work. So that's what we're doing. They are hard to find. Oh, you have one of those? Is it such a cool machine? Like, I, I saw them on, I'm like a little jealous that you have one of those. But yeah, the kids find it so interesting. Everything's interesting to them. When you have stuff going, it's like you want them to be a part of it, but some things they just can't touch. Now pouring. Academy? Yeah, can I get here before Sunday? I don't know what Academy is. I bet. I bet it is paid for itself because that's an expensive machine. Hello. Hey Jen, how are you? File folders. That's what I want. Hi, Amy. It's a sporting goods store? Hmm, that's a good idea. We have, um, Dunham's. I wonder if they have anything. Is my husband still in here? Honey, are you, if you're in here, would Dunham's have rain boots? Oh, thanks Bonnie. Hello. Jen, are you making anything cool today? Because I wanna watch a scope. You're not sure? Okay. Thank you. Maybe we should look there. Let's see if Dunham's has a website. Products. Yeah, so rain boots are expensive and I'm finding that out, but they're old enough now that they're dying for them. Like they just think it's so exciting and they always wanna splash them puddles, which is fine. But I don't want you getting your new, your no nice shoes soaking wet and then try to wear them for the rest of the day. So. You guys are sweet. And I don't think they have any. Always they don't have any on their website. Winter boots though. That's not gonna do us any good. Cleats, which we have to buy too. Alright, who has a young child and like soccer? We're talking about like four or five years old. Do you buy on cleats at that age? Do you put them in cleats at that age? I don't know. They didn't say anything to us when we signed her up. They do? Okay. We don't have a played against sports. It's not something, I miss those places. Amazon has a ton, but Big Five for cheap. Tennis shoes, really? She's so excited that she's playing. So when you guys go on a trip, do you bring your kids home something if you go away? Big Five Sporting Goods. We'll have to look. Target.com. Okay, let's go look there. Bass Pro, Thordy Dicks. Okay, so we'll have to look there. Alright, I'm at Target.com first. I'm cute. Oh, thank you so much. My husband thinks I am too. Oh, we haven't even talked about music yet. I know, I need new music for the work day. What are we looking at? Rain boots. Girls. They do. I got my curtains from there and my new laundry baskets from there. And they're teal colored laundry baskets. Alright, you guys. Check your followers. Oh, those are cute. Forty-four dollars? But forty-four dollars for rain boots? No. They're just gonna grow out of them. Now I have to whisper because I hear them by the door. Okay, some of these are, we're at thirty dollars. That's a little bit better. Still a lot of money for a pair of rain boots. See, if I knew we were having another girl, it wouldn't be so bad because we're passing it down. But I don't want another little girl. We want a boy, right? That's a good idea for, for soccer. I'm shopping for rain boots for my girls for the holidays. Payless, that's a good idea too. Have to look there. I, oh, is Amy still in here? I, Walmart doesn't have anything. Amy, if you're in here, look what shoes I'm wearing today. Did you see them? Told you I had them. You're what? Sing with Washi? You're de-stressing. You're, or Zoo Lily, but Zoo Lily doesn't shit fast, you guys. I know, right? They're the best shoes. Okay, alright, sounds good. Cynthia, thanks. They're the best shoes. They're so comfortable. So comfortable, so comfortable. I'm not paying forty-four dollars for a pair of rain boots. You wish you had what? I don't know. eBay. Yeah, I know. There's some creepers on here, but that's okay. We'll just start talking about live home births and they'll go away again. Just notice, we stopped talking about that and they came on. So we'll just go to talking about having babies at home and they'll go, ew, and they'll go away. Yeah. eBay? I don't shop very much on eBay. How much do you guys shop on eBay? Well, not me lately, since I don't have to worry about that. Amazon, yeah. Amazon has really kinda taken over. Because I think one, well, you know, they have Prime shipping. And it's like super fast. Tractor Supply has them. Look, are you shopping on your phone, honey? Playing pink. Pink would be fine for Michaela because her coat is red with pink polka dots, but the coat I picked out for Addie is purple. With flowers and butterflies, so that wouldn't work. Because they have to color coordinate. See, boys are so much easier to shop for. Oh, you were there this morning? Okay. Boys are easier to shop for. You just get them something with camo on it and they're happy and that goes with everything. Girls, you have to like matchy-matchy. So it's harder. And then you have to think about their personality and if they would like that or not. Yeah, less options. Well, I mean, you stick a pair of black boots on them and they're fine. They're like, oh, cool boots. You know, girls are like, I don't wanna wear those. Depending on their mood. And they, so then they start picking out their outfits and that's a pain. Online Tractor Supply? Alright. This is what I'm doing. Can't say I'm not working because the printer's going. Guys hear it? It's working. Alright, let's search Tractor Supply, you guys. Rain boots for girls. L Bean is nice, but they're not having a sale right now. They do buy one, get one fifty percent off? That's a good idea. Old Navy. My song's on. Ready? Alright, I'm gonna send a prize to the first person who knows who that band is. Pop up your name. Anybody know? Ready? Anybody? I'll be sending you a prize if you know who it is. Nope, it's, no, it's not Green Day. Do you wanna hear it again? You're blanking, Cynthia? We can't be fans. Yay, violent fans. Tweet me your address. I am sending you something. It is my all-time favorite band. All time. And I saw them when they were much older. Much, much older. And they still rocked. Like we're talking about like, they're like almost fifty and they were still rocking. They're awesome. Alright, yes. Sorry, guys. Flashback to when I was a Skeeter chick. Ooh. Okay, guys, I just found some being younger? What? I just found some cute ones, um, on tractorsupply.com. You're horrible with band names, just like the songs, yeah. Zappos, okay, I'm gonna write that down. I'm gonna look at them, but I just found some really cute ones. Hi, Tracy. Thank you. Alright. Get my little to-do list. He is, it's a great store, right? Like we, that's like we get a ton. Alright, I will look at Zappos, but these on Tractor Supply are adorable. And guess what? They're only fourteen ninety-nine. I might be sold already. I might be completely sold. They're purple. Do you guys wanna see them? I don't wanna take you out of here, so hang on one second. Aren't those cute? Seventeen years, wow. Aren't those cute? See if they have a size. Girls, I don't know what she is in the girls. I know, but I don't, these are girls and not toddlers. Okay, let's see if they have them in toddlers. I am? Thank you. That's very sweet considering I didn't even take showers in the morning and my eyes are all puffy. Thank you. They are. Yeah, but here's the problem. I don't know what size to put her in. Oh, well, you're sweet. I'm sixteen weeks. Hey, honey, you wanna take the girls to Tractor Supply and let them try on shoes so I know what size? So buy them. I don't know if it's like Misa, free shipping, I know. Oh, and they're dollar fifty off. So they're thirteen forty-nine. If their feet don't fit, can I just stuff like, um, paper towels in it? So they fit. These are really cute. They're really cute, but I don't know if they're like, yeah. I know it loses surprise. There's no reviews. I can't tell what size, like really what size they are. Starts at like a six. Hot balls on toes on your shoes? Socks, I know. I know this is gonna sound really bad, but honey, what were their shoe sizes again? I don't remember what you said. Eight and ten, so I could do nines and elevens. We have six, eight, ten, twelve, and thirteen. Those are our choices. And I really like those. Yeah, that's the thing. He knows their shoe size. I don't because he usually takes them shopping for their shoes. Yeah, that's the thing, he knows their shoe size. I don't because he usually takes them shopping for their shoes. I know this sounds really bad, you guys, but he does. He does their shoe shopping. Because they behave better for him at the end of the day. Now honestly, he was the last person to take them shoe shopping, so he knows the size. I'm just pulling it as like, I do it too. Okay, eleven, okay. Eight and ten. So could I get Addie a ten? I think I, I could get Addie a ten. We're gonna do it. Yeah, we're just gonna do it and if it doesn't fit, I can return it. Because it's thirteen forty-nine, people. It's like so much cheaper. Ten and twelve. Alright, that's what we're gonna do. Ten and twelve. You can't, no, they're on sale for thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Now I have to figure out how to get, oh, ship to store, let's see if we can do that. Cuz I don't wanna pay ten bucks for shipping. Yeah, Western Chief is a big name brand for those, I'm finding out. Free shipping to store. Okay, I like that idea. Alright, we're gonna see if they have any other ones and if not, we're gonna go with the Amazon. Cuz I have to order multiple places. I know, you guys are keeping me company while I'm shopping, how cool is that? I told you, it's like not a great scoop today. Sorry. I have a list of things I need to get done, so I have to multitask. Am I keeping you entertained? That's good. They have cowboy boots too, honey. You need cowboy boots? They're really cute, they're pink. And then there's some that are hot pink. Yeah, they're really cute. They're hot pink and brown. They're pretty smiffy, okay. They don't really have any rain boots for that one. I won't get carried away, I promise, honey. I love you. For both, for adults and kids. They're really cute. They're really cute, Cynthia. Alright, we're gonna go back to Amazon because Amazon Oh, it didn't connect. Didn't connect to my phone yet. I have stuff in my phone shopping cart. You should, they're really cute. Alright, let's see. I had ones on my phone picked out for my other daughter and they were really cute. So we'll see if you can find them again. If not, I'm gonna have to drop off scope and get them off of my phone. Next time I have to shop for something, I'm scoping, you guys are gonna help me. This is what happens when you don't shop very much. I don't, I'm just not a shopper. I can't find them. Oh, there they are. Alright, you guys wanna see these? Hang on, ready? Aren't those cute? What do you think? Um, right, adorable. Her coat is red and it has like these faded pink polka dots on them. What'd he say? A twelve. And it's on Prime. Right? Aren't those cute? Alright, and then we have to go find the raincoat that I found the baby. Raincoat for toddler girls. Must be really specific here. Oh my goodness, my nose is so itching. I know, love raincoats. And it's like one of those wardrobe things that you kinda forget about after a while and then it's like, oh, yeah. I think that's it. Ooh, and it's on sale. Alright, let's look back at the rain boots. See if they'll match. Cuz they have to match, remember? I might have to get a different raincoat cuz I like those boots better. Alright, I have to find a raincoat, you guys, and it has to be purple because their boots are purple and they're way cute, so. And it won't let you search by color. Really? Come on, seriously. Amazon won't let you search by color. That's crazy. I can search by everything else, but I cannot search by color. Alright, guys, I'm gonna go find a raincoat to go with the boots that you helped me find. So thank you. It is limiting. Yeah, and I need a purple raincoat to match her boots. And I would have to search through like four hundred pages. Alright, I'll talk to you soon. Hey Leah, how are you, Miss Bowden? Oh, I found one. Alright, so I'm gonna go, you guys. I'm sorry you're catching me at the end. I'm gonna go finish shopping so that I can order it so that it gets here on time because nothing like last minute, right? Um, my husband was so good, he ordered the girls these little bunnies, they're hand crocheted stuffed bunnies and they're adorable. And of course, he ordered them ahead of time and they're already here. I had one little task due and I'm waiting till the last minute. So anyways, I'll see you guys later. Hopefully, I think I'm gonna scope later on today. Because I have a planning topic that I wanna talk about later on today. So I will see you later. Yeah, they're really cute. Once we give it to them, then I'll show you guys. And this lady made them that he used to work with and they're really good, like really good. So, but they're hidden right now. So I'll see you guys and I will talk to you guys later this afternoon, probably. Have a good afternoon. God bless.